Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone here to our city council meeting on Tuesday, January 14th, and Wyatt Murray will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
May the Addends please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Wyatt, and now we're grateful that Joe West is here to offer our opening prayer, and here representing the North Canyon State. Thank you so much.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to live in this community, surrounded by the beauties of nature and the goodness of our citizens. We're grateful for the freedom and the peace that we are blessed with. We recognize thy hand in providing these blessings. We pray that we will be blessed this evening in this meeting, that we may enjoy peace and cooperation, that those who are able to make decisions will be wise, that we may be blessed with integrity. For all that we are blessed with, we express gratitude in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much Patriarch West. We will now move to public comment. If you would like to speak, we'd love to hear from you. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address, and the time is now yours. Seeing no one here for public comment, we will now consider approval of the minutes of the previous meetings held November 26th and December 10th, 2024.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 26th and December 10th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And now we will move to council reports. We'll start with you, Councilman Higginson.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilman Murray.
One report in a meeting with the Bountiful History Museum group, I learned that Santa had over 300 visitors this year during the four nights that they had set aside for people coming to visit Santa. So, a bigger group than they had anticipated, but glad they were able to offer that service.
That's great. Thank you. Councilwoman Price-Hewish.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit, in a few minutes, we'll turn the time over to one of our Bountiful City Youth Council members. I have the opportunity to serve with them. Stephen Theriot will be giving a report in a minute, but I just want to recognize the good work that is being done by our advisor, John Cook, and by the students and kids who are on the Bountiful City Youth Council. It is just really a huge privilege to get to meet with these kids every couple of weeks and see the good that they're doing, not only on the council, but in so many ways around the community. I also would like to just say thank you to our Power Department and Power Commission where I am able to serve. There's always the ongoing struggles of planning for an opportunity, of planning for long-term power resources, and maintaining and improving the services and infrastructure that we do provide here, as we have aging substations and constant need of repairs because we have apparently a really overactive squirrel population in Bountiful. And anyway, I just want to say thank you, and put a little plug out there. There's going to be more info to come, but there will be, in the coming weeks, an opportunity for somebody to apply to serve on the Bountiful Power Commission. And it's an exceptional group of individuals who bring a lot of expertise and knowledge and life experience. And so if you are interested in serving in that capacity, or know somebody who is, that will be posted on the city website in the coming weeks.
Thank you for that. I'll just report that I'm on the South Davis Fire District Board, and this last week, they celebrated 20 years, their 20th anniversary of becoming a district. And I got to stop by just for a minute, but it was fun to see them and to acknowledge all the progress they've made. And they're so diligent when I visit the fire stations, and when I hear about the things, and you know, the fires that they're responding to, and our city and our surrounding cities. We're just so lucky to have them. They do a great job. So, that was a special event. Councilwoman Child.
Yes, I'd like to just report on the Service Committee meeting we had this last weekend, where many of the service groups that are here in Bountiful reported on their holiday activities. The Food Pantry, the Rotary Club, the Ben trins Park, Interfaith, concerts, so many things happened. A lot of people were served with, in many different ways, over the holidays, and we just appreciate those volunteers so much. We've got emergency, the Emergency Preparedness Committee will be doing CERT training coming up soon. Their information is on the city website. We appreciate all of their efforts, the efforts of the ham radio operators, all those who are looking out for us in case of emergency. Handcart Days preparations are gearing up already, and they will be held on July 25th and 26th this year. The parade will be the 26th in the morning. And again, it's fun to see all the work and effort that goes into that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of different updates in a couple of different areas. First, the South Davis Recreation District Board met last night. Happy to report that season two of Junior Jazz is just starting for the year and has broken all records. We had record Junior Jazz signups. Last year, we've exceeded that by about 200 Junior Jazz players. Last night was Picture Day. It was cute to see all the kids in their Junior Jazz jersey, getting their picture taken.
Just want to make sure you understand, we had 200 additional kids?
Additional kids. 200. And last night, the girls' teams were having their picture taken. So there were 200 additional Caitlin Clarks beyond last year's level of Caitlin Clarks to lead the Bountiful High Champion Girls Red Hawk Basketball Team, coming up through the ranks. So, lots of exciting things. But it's great to see that that organization that serves our community and the surrounding cities is definitely seeing some rebound in not just our sports participation, but in pass sales and memberships and other things like that. We're still not quite at the 2019 high watermark years, but they're trending in the right way. And Junior Jazz and hockey, particularly with the arrival of our new Utah Hockey Club, we're seeing some real uptick in people that are interested in skating and in hockey. So, exciting news there, and hopefully those will continue to assist with the budget and the revenue for that organization, which we're continuing to point in the right direction, but still worth to do. The other update is that the Utah Legislative Session begins next week. We, of course, have engagement through our membership in the Utah League of Cities and Towns with the Utah Legislature, and the intersection of local government and state government. And I would encourage everyone to be aware that the session is starting and weigh in. And in particular, tomorrow night is an opportunity with the legislators, the four legislators representing Bountiful, the three state members of the State House, and our state senator, who will be here at City Hall to do a town hall and hear from residents, starting at 7:00 PM. And they'll be joined by Lieutenant Governor Deidre Henderson, who's making a special visit as well. So, would encourage folks to put that on their calendar and participate and bring thoughts and feedback for our state legislators.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a great reminder. Yeah, it's fun that they'll be here in our City Hall tomorrow night. Stephen Theriot, is that right? Is that your name? Would you come up now? We're grateful that we have a report from the Youth Council with us tonight.
All right. Thank you. So, most recently, the Bountiful City Youth Council had a visitor from the UVU who gave us a presentation on representing everybody in our community. And previously, before that, we made Christmas cards for those in care centers who need that. And upcoming, we have a food drive in February, and we also have the day at the Legislature next week on the 24th. And we also have a USU Conference on Leadership in March. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. That's great. You guys are busy, doing a lot of stuff. So, thanks to the Youth Council for your work and the way that you help our city. We, now, the next item on our agenda is to consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid December 4th, 11th, 18th, 24th, and 31st, 2024, as well as the November 2024 financial report.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the financial expenditures for December 4th, 11th, 18th, 24th. I was glad we got a spending in on Christmas Eve, and the 31st, as well as the November financial report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, and now we will consider the approval of a liquor license for Annie's Cafe, Mr. Francisco Astorga.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Harris. Annie's Cafe submitted a liquor license, which as a restaurant operator is able to serve, would be able to serve all sorts of alcohol according to the schedule in the Bountiful City Code, in conjunction with any state regulations. We submitted the information to the Bountiful City Police Department, and it came back with no records found. Therefore, they're found in compliance of the city code regarding the liquor license, and we recommend that you approve their license.
So, I just have a question about this. Is this a different kind of liquor license than the ones that are issued where there's only so many, and the state has jurisdiction?
It's exactly that, based on the number of allotted licenses that the state is able to offer.
Okay, so this was...
Before the state issues that license, they have to come to the city, each municipality, and get this local consent. So, that's what this is.
And then they wait for the state to come back to them, saying we have something available?
Correct. So, the state meets once a month. I forget what day of the month it is. They meet once a month. So, they lined up this local consent in order to move forward with their final application through the state. Once approved through the state, then they're required to give us their paperwork. So, we have that on file.
Okay. Annie is here, and we're really grateful for you doing business in Bountiful. We appreciate the good food you serve and the great service that you are in our community. Any other questions about this liquor license?
Mayor, not necessarily a question about the liquor license, but just wanted to add my kudos. I know that not only does Annie operate a great restaurant in our community and has worked to build and expand it, but wanted, since she's here, to give her just a note of kudos. I know that she has been organizing supplies to send to Los Angeles for those that have lost things in the fire. She has been incredibly active, you know, in finding needs in the community and helping fill those, and obviously beyond our community, in arranging for these, the collection of donated goods for those in California impacted. And so, I have found her in our short acquaintance, just to be a really great addition to our business community and our broader community. So, since she's here, I know she's worked very hard this week to get those supplies. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, it's a vibrant, beautiful business in our, in Bountiful. So, thank you. And yeah, your work that you're doing beyond your restaurant is awesome. So, thank you for giving that service. Any other questions about this application?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I'd be happy to make a motion that we grant local consent and ask you to sign it, please.
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, and now we'll move to the next item. That's also you, Mr. Francisco Astorga.
Thank you. This is for a beer license, which in our Bountiful City Code is identified as a Class A retail beer license for the gasoline sales and convenience store located at 202065 South Orchard Drive. The name of the business is called Dungle Brother Incorporated, and they would like to receive, the gas station is currently Phillips 66, and under the new name and operator, they would like, again, local consent to simply be able to sell beer in its original container. That's what that Class A beer license is. Same thing, they still need to apply through the state and get that taken care of.
Any questions?
Mayor, make a motion to approve and grant local consent?
Second.
Is that second by Councilman Murray? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we'll hear from Todd Christiansen to consider approval of ordinance number 2025-01.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm bringing to you proposed revisions to the Bountiful City Code specifically for stormwater management. These proposed revisions are in response to state legislation that was passed last legislative session, and they address stormwater regulations on construction sites specifically. So, the legislative bill is an attempt to make stormwater regulations more uniform throughout the state and the different jurisdictions. And so, to conform with the latest changes in state law, some changes to Bountiful stormwater ordinance are necessary. And these are primarily as follows. No longer requiring a professional engineer stamp on stormwater pollution prevention plans for construction sites. Adjust the stormwater pollution plan review period for construction sites from 30 days to 14 days as prescribed by state law. I will mention that although our ordinance allowed 30 days, we were always within seven days. And then conform enforcement of stormwater regulations on construction sites with the enforcement strategy dictated by state law. The legislative bill included an enforcement strategy that was prescribed. And then, there are a few other changes, mostly for clarity and wording, making the ordinance more consistent throughout. There are no significant impacts anticipated from these changes, and so the staff recommendation is that the city council adopt ordinance number 2025-01, amending chapter 15 of Title VI of the Bountiful City Municipal Code.
Great. Thank you. What questions do we have?
I had a question just about the motivation of the legislature. Was this, do you know, was it, what motivated this change in code? Do you know? I was just curious.
From what I understand, the Home Builders Association was behind this bill, and they seemed to have frustration that different cities had different requirements for stormwater, I guess, inspections, enforcement, and so forth for their construction sites. And there are, I can't remember, roughly 100 municipalities throughout the state who are, as part of their stormwater permit to discharge with the state, and Bountiful is one of these, are required to implement state requirements, I guess not just implement, but enforce state requirements. So, we as Bountiful City have to enforce state requirements for stormwater management on construction sites. We used to have more leeway in exactly how we did it, but because this legislation has changed now, it's a lot more prescribed, you know, exactly what to do. And so, the idea is that the contractors and developers throughout the state, as they work in different jurisdictions, will be, I guess, can better expect what they're going to need to do.
Mayor, can I add some additional commentary? This, the bill that has generated these changes from the 2024 Legislative Session was one that the Utah League of Cities and Towns was engaged on. For those of us that are serving on the Legislative Policy Committee, it's a bill that we talked about a couple of different times during the session. The League of Cities and Towns engaged in what the outcome, the end result bill that made it all the way through the Legislative Session was one that ended up being fairly highly negotiated with a lot of compromises. The stormwater permits had been a long bone of contention for the Home Builders Association, and had long faced pushback from cities, but also from the State Division of Water Quality, and then their role in implementing EPA regulations and things like that. So, it had a lot of push and pull for years, and last year was kind of finally the year where a bill that, I don't know that it had total agreement, but had grumbling acceptance, made it over the finish line. But it had a lot of engagement from interested parties and impacted parties, from the regulatory side and the developer side for the entirety of the 2024 session.
Might I add to that as well, Mayor? There were municipalities in the state that had had this kind of non-restriction for quite a few years leading up to this. So, there was kind of a pilot program essentially of testing among some municipalities to see if a system without engineer stamp could work. And just personal experience, when we built our new headquarters building in Murray, I filled out our stormwater pollution prevention plan because Murray had a checklist of items that we had to abide by. And it took the guesswork out of it for non-professionals, and it also protected their stormwater. I guessed well enough that the state decided to send it statewide. So...
Helpful information. Thanks.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
That was a great additional insight, Richard. Thank you. My question I was going to ask was about, you know, the 30 down to the 14 days, but you answered that. But do you find that there are any other, or are there any onerous things? I know it's likely we're going to permit this. Does this actually take a burden off of the engineering department, or does this add or lessen, or is it neutral in your opinion?
We've operated, for the most part, in line with these, what these changes are. So, like, are these prescribed things that have come out? We have updated our standard operating procedure for inspections and enforcement to follow these, but our procedures for inspection and enforcement weren't really much different. So, I would say that it's not much change for Bountiful City. There is kind of, there's kind of a strange aspect to this legislation that is a huge chunk of it, which is that contractors can do their own inspections and then submit to us documentation, photographs, videos, et cetera, of their construction site, if they want to keep us off the site as oversight inspectors. I honestly don't think that any of our contractors are interested in that, because it's more a burden for them. And then, if we can't see something well enough, then we've got to go inspect it anyway. So, I thought that that was strange, that they put so much effort into writing that into the legislation, but it is there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I would like to make a motion that we, well, are we going straight to the ordinance that we, or do we need to make a motion to?
To approve the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, we'll do, okay. We'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance, Bountiful City Ordinance Number 2025-01. Oh, you were helping me out there.
First of the year.
Yeah, amending chapter 15, Title VI of the Bountiful City Municipal Code.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Child. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's really reassuring to have someone like you, Todd, that is, has all the information about storm drains and can help us along. So, thank you. So, this next ordinance, it wouldn't, this resolution wouldn't be 2025-01 again, because we just passed 01.
I think one's an ordinance and one's a resolution.
Ordinance and resolution.
Oh, thank you. Okay, yes. Thank you so much. Okay. So, now, we, thank you. Chief is here, Chief Beeler, to look at Resolution Number 2025-01.
Perfect. Thanks, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here tonight to propose that we enter into an inter-local agreement through Resolution 2025-01 with the Davis County Sheriff's Office. And just some quick background, in 2010, the Davis County Sheriff's Office applied for and received grant monies from the Homeland Security Grant Program for an armored vehicle. In 2011, they bought a Ford F-550 Super Duty that's been outfitted with armor, and the vehicle is known as a Bearcat, and so I'll probably use that term throughout the rest of the time. Currently, the Davis County Sheriff's Office, Leighton Police Department, who runs the North Davis SWAT team, and Bountiful Police, who runs the South Davis SWAT team, are authorized to use the vehicle, and it's currently being stored at the Davis County Sheriff's Office, and they also do the regular routine maintenance on the vehicle. The vehicle is used on a regular basis by both teams, North Davis and South Davis. There had been an agreement, I don't know if it was ever written down, or if it was a handshake agreement at some point, that if there's damage done to the vehicle, that the entity that damages the vehicle would repair, pay for the repairs of the vehicle. Recently, another entity, not us, damaged the vehicle, and it was at a significant amount where they asked the Sheriff's Office if they would run it through their insurance, and then the entity would pay the deductible. At that point, when attorneys start getting involved, they realized that there wasn't an inter-local agreement or any agreements of any sort that they could see, and so they preferred that we draft something. In your paperwork, you likely saw what that agreement happened to look like, but there's really five sections that are probably most of note. The first one being the process that will be used in the event that damage is done in possession of another agency, as I already talked about, that they'll responsible to pay for that damage, whether it's through the deductible or just out of pocket, or how that's agreed upon. The second one is creating guidelines and priorities for usage. So, an active operation would take precedent over somebody having the vehicle for a public relations style event. The third one is the process for reserving the Bearcat, and how conflicts in who is reserving and when and timing is resolved. Outlines the responsibilities of the county, basically maintaining regular maintenance, repairs, and upkeep. And then it establishes ownership of the vehicle, and that's mainly for insurance purposes. The agreement has been reviewed by myself, the city manager, and city attorney, and with that, we would recommend that the city council approve Resolution 2025-01, adopting the inter-local agreement.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, if I may ask a question, that doesn't have to do with our vote on this, but just out of curiosity. A 2011 vehicle in our family is like the one that we're giving to the kids to drive to high school. Is it still... Is it still in good shape, still sufficient for the need?
It, it is. It does get used quite a bit, probably more than maybe some people would realize or recognize. My understanding is that the Sheriff's Office is looking at getting another grant to see if they can get a, a more up-to-date one. But the one that we have now, I, I don't know it to have had any significant issues. They are expensive and so having it for more than what maybe a regular family use vehicle would definitely be appropriate because it costs quite a bit of money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01 so that we can establish the care and sharing of the Bearcat.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Price Hewish. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
Exactly. Very well stated.
I just, we've given it a name. I mean, it's like, it's, we could, we could, I don't know, think about naming other things like Snowplow's.
We could. We absolutely could.
I do believe there was a motion on that.
Yeah. We'll have to find that. Okay, moving on to item number 10, to consider approval of the purchase of two Transformers. Mr. Alan Johnson.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's great to be here tonight. Both is purchase of two Transformers. These two Transformers are specifically being purchased for the Renaissance Project, for the two buildings that have not yet started construction. But they've got the sizing and the plans and they'll be starting them sometime here in the relatively near future. Because of Transformers, as you can see, have got a long lead time. We had looked out here to, to plan ahead to have them so when they got ready to have it, they'd get power. We went out to get the quotes on these Transformers. And you'll notice on here is that we got in there that if we wanted to get one in roughly a half a year, it would be the 156,000. If you could wait a year, we could get them for the 89,000. Well, as we were getting into it, we found out that Provo City had actually ordered double what they needed. And these Transformers had come into stock and they had backed out of the sale. So we was able to actually buy two of them that are in stock for the low price of $87,452 from Annexer Power Solutions for the GE Fannekin. Basically, it meets all our specs. It would have been the same as the other Transformers. So because of that, we did visit with the city manager and got permission to move forward. And we did actually sign a purchase order to buy these two Transformers. So we do have them. We have pulled the Power Commission, have their recommendation. So it'd be the staff, the city manager, and Power Commission that we approve the purchase of the two GE Prolec transforms, Annexer Power Systems, for the low price of $87,452. And again, these will be, be put into inventory and then will be charged out. And of course, the developer will pay the full cost of these once we put them installed, so.
Any discussion, question?
Not bad to have the low bid come in with an in-stock product.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, this is not what you'd normally, that's why I went through more of the discussion, because this is, as we, before we found it, we were going through the timing, at what price does the developer want to pay? Were you going to be a year, which means you can get the lower one. If you want it quicker than a year, we'll have to, to buy the higher one, because this is the size, we don't keep the two extra in stock. So it's, it worked out really well in our favor, so.
Nice.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the two Transformers from Annexer Power Solutions in the sum of $87,452.
Second.
I was seconded by Councilwoman Child. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And now we'll turn it over to Lloyd Chini, our engineer, to consider the release of public utility easement.
Thanks, Mayor. I have tonight for the Council's consideration, the request to release utility easement on Lot 305 in Phase 3 of the Stone Creek Estates subdivision. And I think probably the best reference material you have is the lovely color aerial photo on page 128, which outlines the area where the release is requested. The property owner is going to build a lovely new home on that site and there's a fair bit of retaining involved on their site plan. And releasing this easement will allow construction of the retaining walls along that property line and so that they can adequately cite their house on this property. To the west is city-owned property. The usefulness of easements along that west side of this phase of the subdivision may be difficult. And so I, I think that it's a reasonable request that this interior lot line easement be released because there's really no usefulness to the north and west from this lot and any future service by utilities could be accommodated in what's already afforded on the subdivision plat within the cul-de-sac. We have the usual release documentation from our utility partners and we'd request that the, the Council approve the release of that and we would record it at the county.
Happy to make a motion that we release the easement as detailed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. And now we will adjourn, but we'll do a roll call vote.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we move to closed session to discuss the character or competence of an individual, the purchase or sale of real property, or, as is in this case, to update us from our city attorney on legal matters pending litigation.
It's been moved and seconded and we'll have a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Price Hewish. Councilmember Child.
Aye.
Councilmember Higginson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned to our closed session.